I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Dave Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Muller.
Here.
Norris Johnson. Lindsey Larson.
Here.
Lori Game.
Okay, we just have one item on the agenda tonight is our public hearing to discuss the funding options and the Highway 23 project in detail and to approve final layout for SP 4801-26, Highway 23 Project. I will open the public hearing at 5:31. And a couple reminders, if you wish to speak, please step up to the podium, say your name and address. We have Chad Erickson, Russell Thelbaum here from the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and also our city engineer from Stantec, Phil Gravel. So they'll be helping us through the process. You guys want to go ahead?
Sure.
Thank you.
So like you mentioned, my name is Russell Thelbaum. I'm the project manager with MINDOT for this project. I'll just run through what we got, kind of give you a little high-level overview of what the project's going to be, and then just have any questions after that, we can talk through stuff. So this showing up on the TV right now is the west end of the project, starting by the Rome River there. And so then through the whole project on the north side, we're going to be adding the 10-foot shared-use trail as shown with the magenta color here. And then when we get to Third Ave here by the school, be placing a roundabout with trail on the north side, starting sidewalk on the south side, and then take the sidewalk up to the existing sidewalk on the south side, up towards Central there. So the big changes here, obviously, is the roundabout that's being placed here, and then the trail on the north side. It will affect the school entrance here. We've been working with the school quite a bit and the city to do this and to make sure that the roundabout flows correctly and everything. We'll have this meeting going past this entrance to the school. So this entrance to the school now will be a right-in, right-out only. With that, talk to the school, and they're going to direct the buses up here, and then this will be a three-way stop to the screen, which I am not able to show with this PDF or whatever. And the buses will come in that way. And then as we go further along, does everybody see this all right? Want to zoom in a little bit more? Let me know if there's a certain area or something I can zoom in if need be. But then we get to Central Avenue here, where there's currently a signal, and we have that being replaced with a mini roundabout, which is different than the full-size roundabouts. This one is used where large semis, but this is an oversized overweight route, so we took that into account for all these two to make sure that those vehicles and everything can still get through. So with this roundabout, the center island along with these splitter islands here are able to be, go over with the semis and everything else like that. So when they're making the turns, they'll actually cut over this center portion. And if they're going straight, they can also run over the center portion. Has moved further east here. Still got the trail on the north side, sidewalk on the south side, nothing much changes, other than narrowing up the road a little bit. There will be no, I don't think there's currently parking, but there's going to be a narrower shoulder than there is today. And that's, part of that is to slow traffic. When you get the condensed cross-sections and stuff like that, it usually gets results in slower traffic going through town, which with this project, a lot of it is trying to get traffic to slow down through town, make it more pedestrian-friendly, and just safer as far as speeds go as well for traffic. And then here, just east of Fifth Avenue, the sidewalk ends at the last residence there on the south side, but then the trail continues on to the east. One of the other changes that's noticeable is this third street, which right now has a right-in, right-out only access to 23, will be cul-de-sac-ed off to these last two residences to make sure that they still get access there. Worked with the police department and everything else, made sure that that was okay with them, that they didn't do this to get out to 23. And they said, yeah, they use a different housing way. It actually benefits them because they don't have as much traffic coming by when they're trying to get out of their parking stalls there and stuff. Then again, not a whole lot changed until we get up here by Quick Trip and parties, put another roundabout there. And then as we enter the ramps and everything here, so these ramps will be coming southbound. If you're a right-old one, you have to come roundabout, turn around, go back to head east. You can still access the southbound ramp for both directions. And then the northbound ramp has a roundabout there. And then coming towards the east end of the project here at 110th, we have the full access for turning out to 23, but if you want to turn onto 23, that would be a right-only. This is one of the higher crash incident areas of the project, so it's kind of a trickier one to make sure that we could still see traffic at full, but improve the safety and everything. So this one, with the roundabouts too, also on the east end here, we got one at Casatu, another roundabout. The big push there too is that it'll slow traffic down coming into town and everything like that, let them know that they're entering. Because right now it's a pretty rural section right there, and help them know that they're getting into an urban section, city area. So slow traffic, which will also help this intersection as well, having slower traffic, so you don't have to pull out with higher speeds and everything. So that's kind of, I mean, overview of the project. And we'll also include city utilities, any crossings and stuff like that, we'll do while streets store up. Lighting will be replaced. Working with the city on what level, they would prefer, because there is cost participation with that as well. So make sure that it's something that they're comfortable with, still gives the lighting needed. Right now, this is scheduled for September of '26, light-in, so it'll be '27 and '28 construction. Not an exact staging yet, but you know, we start on the one end, work halfway or a certain way, and we finish it the following year and stuff like that. During construction, detour areas that we can, helps construction get done faster. But there'll always be access to businesses and stuff like that, not going to be shut off from getting access to their locations.
Can you mention just the one change that we did make on 23 there for the left-in coming from the east?
At 110th you're talking?
Yeah.
Yeah, so originally when we did, so like, a lot of this came involved, well, all of this came involved because there's a corridor study done prior to design, started and everything, looking at the safety of the whole corridor as a whole and everything like that, what problems were and what the issues were. And again, 110th was one of the bigger problem areas. And originally, we had the median going across there completely, so it was a right-in, right-out only on both sides. So if you were coming eastbound and you wanted to take a left out 110th, you'd come down with a roundabout, make a U-turn, come back. Which again, I understand people that's counterintuitive why they would pass to go there, doesn't have a ton of time. But then dealing with, working with the city and businesses and stuff like that, and our local or MINDOT traffic folks were able to change this to the left-out. Our traffic folks were a little hesitant on that, but they think that's, with the lower speeds, because we're all about coming to town, it's just to be a safe movement and everything else like that. So after discussing and everything else, got the okay from them to make this change here, so you can take a left out of 23 to go north or south there at the intersection. Are there any questions or comments, or anything you want to specifically discuss?
Steve, you had, well, go ahead, Ken.
Why you don't have that roundabout on 110 instead of out there for coming by 2?
So that was looked at, that was one of the options. You know, I was a part of the corridor study. I guess Chad knows more about that if I, so if I need to speak on this or if you have something to fill in that I missed. So a big thing here too is the Casatu, I mean, that's a high-traffic county road and everything else too. By putting it over here, like I said before, it kind of slows traffic down coming in, you know, lets them know that you're coming into town. To where a roundabout here obviously doesn't improve Casatu and all that safety at that intersection. So this, with a lot of different alterations on where the roundabouts could go, was looked at, and this addressed all of the intersections, you know, trying to make them safer. So they just, I understand we're saying that was the main concern one, but it says, you know, with this other one becomes a concern in the future, then we're trying to proactively by keeping it safe there too.
I'm wondering about the roundabout at the stoplight. Why not just leave the stoplight?
So signals, so there's a couple things. Like some, we have had those comments about, you know, why not signals at any intersection, you know, said roundabout, stuff like that. Talking to our traffic folks, I'm not a traffic expert by any means, but you know, the conversation with them. So signals are not safety devices. Federal government doesn't have any safety devices. Because you do get safety funds for problem intersections, and you know, a lot of them give funds for signals because they don't actually make intersections safer for the most part. Like in our district, the highest crash intersections are signal intersections, which when you're granted, you put signals at the higher volumes, so you're probably against more crashes. But a lot of places when you put signals and stuff, sometimes crashes a lot due to people aren't paying attention, you're going to crash it. And plus with the signal, you can get the right angle crashes, somebody runs a red light, and those are the more severe crashes. This is where the roundabouts give results and stuff, so it makes it safer. And with, with the current layout here, actually, it is a very tight intersection there. That's why it's a mini roundabout and without a larger roundabout. And right now, like, to make the left, for some of this stuff, to make a left turn, they actually have to impede on other lanes and stuff like that to make that maneuver work. So it's not really functioning properly like the signal intersections should today.
Can I expand on that a little bit? There was a, I mean, the original concept during the corridor study was a signalized intersection there. But most of the, like Russell was saying, most of the crashes were involving left-turn vehicles. So we looked at, how do you address that? Well, they mostly would have been solved by left-turn lanes. So we developed a concept with a left-turn lane. But then we started looking at the geometry of the intersection to understand how trucks can make turns. And if we have a left-turn lane in there, the intersection is too tight. So then trucks would have had to make the right turn out of the left-turn lane on a green, and you can understand the conflicts there. So they went through quite a few iterations, and that's how it landed at the mini roundabout. You know, roundabouts, standard roundabouts have been proliferating across the state for 20 years now, and for a good reason, right? They have high operational and safety performance. Mini roundabouts are a little bit newer. So we did really bet this a lot during the study, just to, this was the highest crash cost, highest crash intersection on the corridor of this, and 110th, well, the two highest ones. But, so there was a lot of back and forth to get to the mini roundabout here.
Steve, did you want to talk? I know you turned in a sheet. I'm assuming you wanted to speak.
Sure, yeah, if I could.
Absolutely, yep, go ahead.
My name is Steve Hague, and along with my wife, we own the car wash at 850 10th Street Northeast in Malaca, Minnesota. We appreciate this opportunity to come before the council, and thanks for all your hard work in designing all this. And it's exciting to be a, you know, a part of a community that's at a vital crossroads in East Central Minnesota, and really looking to become and solidify a position as a gateway to the north. A couple comments tonight just offered for consideration, coming from my perspective as a real estate developer that has developed, I took numbers, so about 66 million square feet of commercial and industrial real estate property across the country. I was a former executive in property development for Target Stores, developing distribution centers, you know, doing a lot of traffic studies, you know, as well, and truck maneuvering specifically, and, you know, several thousand residential units as a part of mixed-use residences and developing communities, again, across the country. Couple of, couple of comments, just as suggestions and maybe, you know, an opportunity for some, I know you're looking to finalize and make some decisions this evening, but, you know, just quite possibly, you know, there might be an opportunity to discuss some of these items. Interestingly, our son and his wife, they are partners and operate the largest Christian school in the state of California. They're developing a 40-acre campus. And their access into that campus, so it's high school, you know, down through daycare, a lot of traffic, high-volume streets and highways. And they control all of their access through left-turn lanes with arrows. And it's privately funded, you know, granted, because we understand, you know, the funding is, even in the state of California. So they're privately funding it. So if there's some way to look at, you know, further improving the access at the high school, you know, beyond the roundabout, this might be an opportunity to put, you know, everything together, to get the cars physically in, the buses in and out of the, of the, of the high school. At Central, I understand, you know, the challenges, you know, it's a tight intersection. The, the traffic movements, the R30 radius is the bare minimum, I mean, for a right turn, for a, for a truck going westbound on 23, and then to go north on Central, up into the industrial park and that part of our community. Our findings at Target Stores, if we design at the bare minimum, it takes an attentive driver to make those turns consistently without damaging their equipment, you know, sidewalks, you know, other, you know, running out. It's, it's a, it's a very tight design. Our suggestion, and our findings in all of our industrial developments, and part of the, this comment is based on, a lot of traffic going north on Central is going up into that industrial area, is that a signalized intersection is the, is the best way to manage the, the traffic and the flow and the turns. The, the design here additionally impacts, at least as I looked at it earlier today, the Holiday Station with the new access moved to the east, they'll have to relocate their trash dumpsters. I mean, it already, it's going to already, an already constricted site is going to be further restricted. So again, you just might want to, you know, revisit that, that intersection, again, based on, you know, industrial use and, and traffic flows along those lines. The roundabout at Highway 23, I guess our suggestion is, as, as we observe traffic up at Dusty's, there's a lot of, of traffic going up to the industrial park on 110th or 10th, whatever that, that is. It would be our suggestion that the roundabout at the northbound exit off 169 be relocated east to 110th, and then match the right turn only that you have on the southbound side at, at the northbound exit. That way, you're improving the traffic flow both east and westbound on 23 off 110th, to enable a smoother flow out of the commercial and industrial properties on the north end of the town. Ideally, we'd like to see a signalized intersection there. Again, our standard in developing commercial and industrial properties, and, again, it's in the private sector, so, you know, so there's no government funding available. You know, we're, we're funding this ourselves, but they're all signalized. We don't, the users typically do not like roundabouts. An example I would give is the, that you can look at, is the FedEx Distribution Center in La Crosse, Wisconsin, where, again, it was a state highway, but we publicly, or the project publicly financed turn signals for access into the, into the site, because they did not want a, a roundabout at, at that location. So users, you know, that, that might consider, you know, locating, you know, up here specifically in the industrial and the transportation areas, like traffic signals as opposed to roundabouts. And the last comment is, I would suggest that we defer the Far East Roundabout for, you know, future consideration, based on what the final plans are for some of that vacant land on the east side of the town. And again, this is, in our, from our experience, if we're coming in and we're going to pitch a 300,000-square-foot distribution center to the city of Malaca, we would be funding and paying for, whether it's signalization, round, you know, whatever the final design is, that would be funded as a part of, of our project. And there would be no need for any government contribution. So, you know, not knowing what's going out there, it might be, you know, worth considering, you know, deferring that one, that one roundabout until a, a future date. But exciting times, you know, it's, and I know this is way down the, way down the road and, and late in making comments, but I think it's an opportunity to really great, make, make everything work for, for all the users here in the, in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
So if we want to go to the next question first, or try and address some of that?
Sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand, Tom.
Quick question.
Sure.
Here rumors. Are signaled intersections in the long term or roundabouts the most expensive?
Well, Chad can correct me if I'm wrong. So signals prices have gone up a lot recently, like everything, inflation, stuff like that. So they used to be 400, 500,000 to put a new signal. Now we're getting some, or some intersections are costing up to 900,000. So roundabout, is at the, at the beginning, is still going to be slightly more expensive, not nearly as much, because signals are so much more expensive now. But the long-term maintenance and electrical and everything else that signals take, over time, roundabouts are the cheaper, more cost-effective option. Chad, is that accurate?
Yeah, it balances out pretty well, depending on the period you look at, if you're kind of, 20 years. Signals used to cost above $10,000 to maintain here between, between power and, and maintenance costs. Gets significantly higher as the lights, as the signal gets older. But yeah, some of the recent signals we're seeing come in are in that $8, $9,000 range for the signal system itself. Some backstory, it's not just inflation, the FHWA kind of forced MINDOT's design to do a new design. They had a standard design that had been placed for decades. This new design is just significantly more expensive.
And I guess, I just wanted to touch on one of the comments here on the east end about this, this roundabout at Casatu, and future development and everything. So that was considered when this was all designed and everything. So this roundabout at Casatu is actually designed so that 110th in the future could be realigned and connect into this roundabout for better access if there is development and everything like that. Because, again, the roundabout intersections will flow more freely and safer than the other ones. So that was one thing that was considered moving, moving forward for future reference. And as far as Costco and stuff like this, the county does have, so roundabouts, same with the signals, there's a cost share for the intersection. So if MINDOT owns 50% of it, so 23 would be 50%, two legs out of it. On this one, it'd be 66%, though, just because it's two-thirds, whatever. But the other legs, whether it's city, county, or whatever, have their share on that as well. And the county does have some H-SIT funds that they have for this intersection to pay for their share of the roundabout there. And again, like I mentioned before, the H-SIT funds that they have are, for MINDOT anyway, H-SIT funds cannot be used for signals, you know, they'll be used for safety improvements, which signals, what's that?
What does H-SIT mean?
Highway Safety Improvement.
Program.
And just going back to the cost in the roundabout and the lights, I think just in our conversations, because we've had years of Zoom meetings over this thing, and correct me if I'm wrong again, but the biggest thing is they're, they're much safer. I mean, and it's the left-hand turn that seems to be the big concern, which is way more dangerous, more fatalities. And this pretty much eliminates the left-hand turns on those streets, especially at high speed.
Correct. I mean, the higher speeds, yeah. I mean, roundabouts are designed to slow speeds when you're coming into them. So that's a big thing, right? Any, a lower-speed crash is going to be less severe most, most of the time. Again, in the left turns, like you said, but then the right angle crashes, nothing stops somebody from running a red, a red light if they're not paying attention, stuff like that. So that can still be a T-bone right-angle crash like that at high speeds. As with the roundabout, I mean, I suppose technically somebody could go flying over the middle, but it doesn't happen very often, I guess. But so, you know, it is, it's a huge safety for, for traffic, but then also pedestrians too. It's been shown to be safer for pedestrians with the lower speeds and everything. Plus pedestrians, they have these, these islands or center islands, pedestrian refuges, they call them, in the middle. So you only have to cross one lane of traffic at a time. As with signaling, you got to cross the, the turn lane and both through lanes and all that stuff. Here, you're just looking one direction, you know they're coming from a certain direction, you look, you wait for a clear spot, then you get over into the refuge, and then you're looking one direction again, you need another clear spot to go through. So it's safety for, for traffic and also for pedestrians. Yep?
We live right next door to Holiday on Central. So we, and we've lived at that spot for almost 50 years. Anyway, we really like the idea of a roundabout, because we know that many times when we've almost run T-bone, people running with the light, and many times we had to maneuver so that a truck could make a turn. And that's from all the production.
Sure.
So we're just really happy to see, hopefully, a roundabout come in.
I appreciate it. And then, so the mini roundabouts, you, like, I personally don't have a ton of experience with them, but I do know for the district, I don't know if it's up north somewhere, we had a detour route, and there was enough traffic that we needed to put in a temporary mini roundabout like this in small town, for the detour traffic to be able to go through these intersections. And when the detour was done, or our project was done, we took the detour down, so we took the mini roundabout away. And the city actually came back to MINDOT and asked to put it in permanently, because it worked so well for them. So I mean, just, you know, learning that myself and stuff kind of proves that it must work pretty well, at least in that instance and everything. So there's a good chance that it works well here too.
That was Crosby, I lived at 60210.
Okay.
I can't remember, it was 20210.
I have a question about the, the crosswalk right now that currently exists down by the high school.
Sure.
You know, kids cross Highway 23 there. What's going to happen with the foot traffic there?
I mean, I guess, what do you mean, what's going to happen with foot traffic? I mean, hopefully, I mean, we're designing this for the, the trail and the sidewalk and everything connected there to improve the foot traffic, so you can get more there and cross better. And we're also, I guess, we're working with the school right now too, and the city, at putting, so they're called rectangular RRFPs, Rapid Flashing Beacons, so the pedcrossing signs where you push them, then they flash when the, when the pedestrians are there to help cross and stuff, to get the attention of traffic and everything, to let them know that there's somebody crossing there. So we're working with them right now to put one here on the west side of the roundabout. So if you come from the east, the roundabout should be slowing people down, you can still see it, but when you're coming into town, then there's that white flash, you just need to let them know that people are crossing there.
And Dave Whedon spent a lot of time meeting with these guys, talking about that whole issue, because that's a huge concern. The best part of it is, right now, when you cross, the chances of getting hit are pretty good, because people will stop for the pedestrian or the kid walking across, and then people will pass them on the right, a lot. And this eliminates that, which is probably the most dangerous thing I see down there. And then we did make a change. Initially, it was going to be that meridian, or whatever you guys call it, was going to go farther down. So it'd have to be a right-out of the parking lot. And now it's right-or-left-out, and that'll, that should help too, as far as kids not having to take a right, whip a U-turn at the bridge, and come back, because that's what they do. So that, that ended up coming out nice too. And these guys spent a day, I don't know who it was, with Dave Whedon up on the building at 3 o'clock, and watched how everybody empties out, where kids go, our traffic patterns and all that. And I think that was helpful.
Yep, absolutely. It's good to see you firsthand.
One thing I wanted to mention, that I know we're all looking at streets and all that and stuff, but that walking path, I think, is really, really biking path in maroon there, whatever color, that purple, is really a, a big safety factor that I think kind of gets lost in everything else. Being able to safely walk from the high school out to the bypass area, the junction, will really be nice, because if you walk from Quick Trip to Holiday now, your odds aren't good of something happening. I mean, you're, it's, it's not safe. And this will make it a lot better, a lot safer, all the way through town. And I've had people ask me, can't we have a walking route somewhere in town? And this would provide a, a very nice one, that would connect down to the one at Rec Park. So that's a, that's a good benefit too. Yes, any other questions or any other topics haven't been touched on?
Someone at a diversity meeting, they mentioned that the highway department may help the signage for businesses, to help folks find the business. For example, since we have the car wash, folks, and a lot of the business comes from the north. You know, they're coming to wash an ice castle, or the RV, or boat, they come from the north. Now they're going to have to go west, and then go east, and unfortunately, they can do the left turn out up to 10. However, it's going to be a little more difficult for folks to find it. And you can see it from the highway here, you know, driving north. Is there an opportunity, does the highway help with signage?
So you're talking like permanent after the project, not during construction, you're saying?
Right, after, like a directional sign. For example, on Highway 169, Salt Lake here, there's a long siding barn west For example, on Highway 169, salted here, there's a long sighting barn restaurant, there's a sign, does an arrow pointing, you know, to show how to get to it.
Sure.
Is that something that's available?
I mean, I would have to look into that. I guess I don't wanna tell you the wrong thing right now, so I would look into it and let you know.
The policy is historically done. I worked for MinDOT for five years, but the policy, what I worked for MinDOT was that if you met certain conditions, restaurants, you see often gas stations, and then if it's a certain distance, there's a few qualifications, MinDOT will often do it, but they will charge the price of the sign and the install to do it, so they don't donate the sign and the install.
Dave, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
The city's portion of this project is pretty significant. Where will those funds come from?
That's the discussion, that's why this is not being passed tonight. We still have that coming up in our budget discussions at our next workshop, because it's a, it's a decent amount of money that we're gonna have to look at bonding or whatever our plan is for that. I don't think we're at a point to really say at this point. Yeah, that's part of the budget discussion coming up here. And that'll be depending on what we do lighting-wise, too. I mean, the lighting is kind of the the wild card right now, isn't it, Phil, would you say? Yeah, trying to figure that out. You know, what we go with, what we can use, it's present, you know, it'd be nice to have nice lights, nice lights are really expensive, so there's a lot of things to look at.
For just helping the city, is it possible to get a code for the cost of the roundabout versus signals, for example, of 110th? The, there's already the turn lane there, so it would be just the signals we'd have to add, and obviously there's ongoing maintenance, but folks are really only crossing one lane of traffic, you know, to, from the signal. And, you know, we received accident reports in the past 10 years from sheriff, and there was no fatalities at all, it's just been fender benders like maybe on average one year the last 10 years, so, not that it can't happen, we certainly don't want anything worse, but I guess I just wanna make sure it's just very transparent as far as what the accidents have been. We continually hear 110th is one of the worst spots, but it's nothing compared to many areas in many of the cities.
So for 110th itself, if we put a signal on there, that would significantly increase the case that these costs share. Right now, MinDOT's paying for the mainline highway work, and the local legs are pretty low-cost for reconstruction. But if you did put a signal in there, then 50% of the cost of that signal would go to the local agencies. I believe the north leg is County Road, I think it's County Road 37. And so the south leg would be the city, and you'd get about a quarter of the roughly $800,000, plus the additional work that it would take. It looks like it'd be fairly cheap to just install a signal, but it actually isn't, especially when you have a full reconstruction coming through. I mean, it's cheaper to install them than not, but there's a lot of support systems that have to be built in. And now I would assume that that would use video detection instead of loops here, but I would, I would say the cost of the city would increase significantly at that intersection if I went to a signal.
I guess, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud here, too, so this doesn't mean a whole lot, but like if if the signal, in other projects, if the signal isn't technically warranted with this design, are you saying add a signal with our current design? Because if we keep the exact same current design and add a signal just for that intersection that technically probably isn't warranted with this design, then I could see that the locals would have to pay 100% of it. So that, I'm just thinking a lot, I can't say that for sure, but that'd be something to consider.
Is there a mini roundabout that we could go drive through? We've been through fully a lot, we've been South Rapids where there are five roundabouts in a row. Slick, it could be out there in a...
At a school over there?
Yeah, by the school, and the Volus Vikings Road is the one name on that thoroughfare. I was just wondering if there's a mini something we could look at.
I think Chad has a few, he's worked on some, but...
You'd have a little journey.
Yeah.
St. James is the two oldest ones in the state, down there north of 60, I forget the track highway that jogs through town there. They put those in probably five years ago, so far that everything I've heard on them is good, but I don't know of any other ones. Oh, that's wrong, I'm wrong, Pelican Rapids just opened, and there's two in Pelican Rapids that are the exact same size as this, I'm trying to remember, 59. And there's, I forget, the East West are out there, 59's on our south, but, so that just opened a few months ago.
There's one in Hayley.
Yeah, the one just on the west, 35.
35 and 23. I'm not sure if that one, I think it is here.
It's a temporary one they put up during construction, it's right, right as you approach it.
Thank you.
Your honor, I've used my five minutes, can I make one last?
That's fine, you can just say Dave, too.
As I, in preparing for this meeting, as I looked at Highway 169 from Rogers to Hibbing, there are, and there is no instance of a interchange of significant highways that are designed or impacted as much as as this at 169 and 23, and then specifically in what I would call an inequity in in access at 110th as compared to the street in front of Quick Trip. I'm just kind of wondering why, you know, number one, it would, you know, this is such a, a significant effort on the part of the state when traffic counts are very similar down at 95 and 169 in Princeton, I mean, within 150 cars a day. And so, I mean, it just, it seems like an inequitable criteria is being applied in this, at this location and in the system. From appearances, again, looking at the corridor, I mean, all the way through, you know, the Oak River reconstruction that that was just completed, this, this seems to be a little bit out of what would appear to be the norm.
And you're saying specifically at 110th, are you talking the whole corridor here?
I, I'm saying the exits, north and southbound exits off 169, limiting, you know, those to at least the right turn only at southbound 169, and then, yeah, and then 110th, you know, being a, with the left turn island, but you can't make a left turn going east on on 23 out of the industrial, the commercial portion up north. So it just seems, you know, that there's, there's not balance in the, in the application of this standard.
It is different, there's not a ton of intersections, especially interchanges where you see you can only make a right turn off. There's one on 95 and then northwest, or 94 exiting, I can't remember exactly where that is, Russell, if you remember where that is, you gotta make a right turn and U-turn. But I would say that there isn't really a standard on these, that's why each project, if there was, I'd probably be out of a job. That's why each project, at some level or another, MinDOT either internally or does it, or they hire someone to walk through, study it, we had the the city process, we went through, we did the data, and what led this to that location. And then you're right, we did have a number of different intersection types, right? One of the concepts, the concept that was, the two that moved forward were essentially what you're saying, was a roundabout on the east at 110th and 3/4, with the characteristics of the corridor, where the crashes are happening, where the big traffic moves are happening, that's how, that's how it ended up where it is today, where the individual intersection, like, first year is kind of unique because it does go into town. One big thing that, that rear its head right away, it was as soon as that Quick Trip opened, we started seeing a lot more crashes there, that wasn't necessarily in the data until that opened. And then you have trucks going in and out of there, so all those things are taken into account on each and every one of these type of projects as you do the study and the preliminary engineering to get to this point. So there isn't really a standard approach on, on them, and I would say it's getting to be less and less of a standard approach. Probably the standard approach anymore is getting to be the roundabouts with maybe in between them. It's, you know, it's a frontier evolution.
So what I'm hearing you saying is that this design favors Quick Trip at, at the expense of other businesses because of their, their law.
No, what he said is we had to create one there where we didn't think that was that bad of an intersection according to numbers, and then all of a sudden their numbers skyrocketed at that intersection.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily, you're not necessarily looking at particular businesses, you're looking at the traffic those businesses are generating.
I understand, but you're looking at the generators of the traffic.
Yeah, where they're coming out on the truck.
Right.
Yeah, and then Quick Trip. Yeah, Quick Trip, you know, causes a lot of problems across, not, you know, problems from a, from an intersection standpoint, because there's just some drawing driven there.
Right.
If not, I'll close the hearing, it is six, public hearing at 6:12. I get a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to.
I'll second.
All in favor, indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is closed. That is, nothing else on our agenda, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, indicate with an aye. Aye. We're adjourned.
Aye.